Today is February 7, 2023. It is 7:01. We are going to go into exec session for 2.1 personnel matter tenure, 2.2 legal matter district, 2.3 personnel matter. May I have a motion to go into exec session?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion carries. We will stop. All in favor?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Small brick.
Oh, you don't understand. Good evening, Byram Hills. Welcome to the Board of Ed meeting for Tuesday, February 7, 2023. It's now 7:41 PM. The Board went into exec session at 7:01 PM to discuss 2.1 personnel matter tenure, legal matter district, 2.3 personnel matter, pride and employee. Can you please rise and join me in the pledging of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
This artwork is... Any questions or comments from the public regarding matters on the agenda? Okay, none? May I have a motion to adopt the revised agenda to include unfinished business 10.2, second reading of the 2023-24 district calendar? May I have a...
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? And that included Section 6 personnel, 7 special services, and 8 business. Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to our curriculum discussion on point 1. All right. Wow, I just blew through nine cents.
I'm gonna welcome these forever.
You tell Lori. So I want to welcome Annie Schmidt here from Wampus and Dave Mack, our principal, who are here to talk with us. Tim's gonna be facilitating the conversation with Gina and all their work on how we are helping our students with their social emotional needs.
Just trying to get my computer.
Sure.
The screen's up here.
And I've had the opportunity actually to see you in action in your classes, which has been fun.
Okay. I'll put the other one on in a moment. I have trouble with this other screen.
That's okay. My computer doesn't really let me do it anymore.
I know, right?
You gotta make it up to you.
You're good. Okay, so we're excited to have Dave Mack, our principal at Wampus, and Annie Schmidt, our guidance counselor at Wampus, our school counselor. So we want to talk tonight about character education at Wampus, and we have been piloting a character education curriculum over the past... this is our second year piloting that. So we're gonna go through a little bit about the process of how we got there, and then we have Dave and Annie to talk about the implementation of it. We're not yet asking for an adoption. We haven't made a decision yet, and we'll talk about that a little bit, about our process and thinking about this. So we've been working over the past two years at our site-based team meetings on character education. I showed you several times our character education principles of respectful dialogue, respect for self and others, and service and kindness. Those were developed with our community about 25 years ago. So we're looking at them again through site-based to see if we should be revising those, and I have a subcommittee working on that right now. So we've been spending a lot of time talking about what would it look like today? Are those principles still relevant? So also along, over the past couple of years and for a decade, we've been working with a lot of partner organizations. We've worked with the University of Michigan Depression Center. We've worked with the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and we've worked with Stanford University's Challenge Success. And all of those organizations has been helping us recognize that connection between emotional wellness and cognition and how students learn. And we know that to maximize student learning, you have to be emotionally well and you have to be operating your executive function skills at their best. And that's our goal, is to work on executive function, to work on those emotional wellness, and to help students achieve their greatest potential. So we see that link. So having done a lot of that work, some of the work has been K-12, some of it has been at the secondary level, we started to have discussions a few years ago about the need for some type of consistent program, kindergarten through fifth grade, that would lead to the middle school and high school. And that's when we decided to put together a committee to study that. And Gina and Dave worked on that committee together. So Gina, you'll talk about the process we've gone through, and then we'll get into a conversation with Dave and Annie about some of the specifics of this particular program.
Sure. So actually, this work in particular for Dave and I, obviously from our former positions, is certainly near and dear to our hearts in terms of social emotional learning. We began this work in December of 2020, and we continued meeting, just the two of us, through March. And that was really a March of 2020. Our focus was on creating a timeline in which we could think about the implementation of both a committee as well as looking at curriculums with a committee to determine what would make the most sense. So initially, we researched at Yale programs that our surrounding districts were using. We also were able to connect with some of the providers in those districts to learn about what their experience was, what were some of the strengths, what were some of the challenges of those particular programs, and then really created an analysis on the programs that we had researched, both from the providers' feedback as well as our own experience in learning about these curriculums. And we were looking at first and foremost, of course, does the curriculum and the program align with the New York State benchmarks and also our character education principles? Is this a program that has an abundance of resources that are easily available for teachers to supplement in addition to what our hope was for the school counselor at the time? As well as, do they have a commitment on their part in terms of the developers to continuously update their resources and make them as relevant as possible for our students and our families? Fortunately, in and around the same time, we started having the discussion about creating the role of the school counselor, which thank you for supporting, and now we have Annie. So that was just in and around the same time. In March of that year, we put together a K-5 social emotional learning committee, which consisted of both elementary principals as well as the Coman Hill assistant principal. Obviously, Dave was an assistant principal at that time. Our social worker, who was working at Coman Hill at the time, and both school psychologists at the elementary level, just to ensure. And even at one point, we had invited the PE and health coordinator, Dorian Cohen, to be a part of that, just to see if there was any overlap and a little bit of feedback as well. Our goals were pretty straightforward, that we were going to collectively evaluate the curriculums and determine what the best option was to pilot, to determine who would be kind of responsible or overseeing this program in terms of implementation and the integrity of the program, right? Which we all, you know, knew the school counselor was going to be on board, and that would make the most sense. Again, aligned with the New York State benchmarks, and also really responding to feedback that we received from our teachers in terms of the needs of our students as well as parents, and just listening to anyone who touches the life of a child, what are some of the needs and how can this program best support them? I'll pass it over to Dave. Or a question made from you?
Yeah, now I'll just say, or jump in anytime if you have questions. This is meant to be a conversation, but you know, I could talk to them all day. Certainly, you don't get to do that, so jump in.
Well, and think about unfunded mandates from New York State Ed, right? And this is one that was spot on.
I said that today.
Right? I'm glad they had the foresight to require schools to think about this and do this. And it doesn't mean that every school selected a program and is doing it with any confidentiality, or they might just have somebody available, and that's not necessarily programmatic or helping kids, but...
And I think they reinforced the idea of that.
I think that's one of the things we really found when we started, you know, kind of speaking to different people in this area, you know, what programs to use at the elementary level, who's your person that's overseeing this? There's not a lot. You're right. So I think we've been really at the forefront of some of this stuff. And when we think of this program and this position, the one big thing that Gina and I kept talking about was, how does this relate to our needs with the kids here, right? There's the New York State benchmarks, you know, but most importantly, I think, what we were looking for is something that gives very, very specific activities with intent, with the activities. And I'll explain a little bit about that. Some of the slides, there's a lot on there. We won't go through it all. And obviously, if you have any questions, please, please let me know. So these were kind of our big summary about why we ended up with Character Strong. Again, Gina spoke a little bit about the New York State benchmarks, where it speaks about at each grade level, what are we looking for children to be able to do? And with Character Strong, there really is a vertical alignment, K-5, of what those things are that they're looking for. Those are some of the New York State examples. And then this one is a nice slide where it actually talks about, they kind of had benchmarks at each grade level of what they think are important for children to know at these grade levels. When we think of the upper elementary, and we think of positive self-talk, distress management, the goal setting, the leadership, and we were able to look at these activities, it aligned with what we really think those kids need, with the flexibility. So Annie and I were speaking last week about, you know, how do we really meet those needs, right? We have New York State tests coming up. Annie's gotten some feedback from a teacher that had, you know, we did the simulation for the New York State exam for the computer-based test, and my kids, though they did a really good job, I just, I wonder if you could come in and do a lesson on stress management, right? So our structure right now is we deliver it in the third grade encore cycle. Encore cycle is essentially once a month, Annie will go in and have each class for the month of September, she would have a class, and then October a class. And then at the end of the year, all the kids in third grade have the same exact experience. And then in fourth and fifth, Annie goes in and speaks to the classroom teachers about what in their classroom community is something that's needed. And again, we can talk about stress management, or respect, or how do we advocate for ourselves? So if Annie doesn't mind, what I want to do is, I know you just started a new encore cycle not too long ago with third grade. I thought it might be good for you guys to hear kind of an example of what this activity, the activities look like.
So you go to the next slide for a second. So these are the nine traits that Character Strong, that make up Character Strong. So in encore, like Dave said, I just started a new cycle last week. And the first two traits that we touch upon are respect and kindness. So one of the first things we do is make a recipe of respect. What goes into that? What are your instructions? How do you carry it out? And, you know, we bring that to our next activity with kindness, where students make a map of Wampus, a gigantic map, and they have to pick five locations to highlight where they think they could spread a little bit more kindness in the building. So with their groups, they get to be creative, make this big map, and really decide that they have the power and where they want to bring more kindness to. So they finish their map, they present them, and make smaller copies that they keep with them. And I encourage them, you know, when you go to this location, be mindful of those, you know, goals that you set for yourself, to be kind throughout Wampus.
So Annie, what were some of those locations students identified?
Oh, I can guess.
I bet everyone here could be.
Cafeteria.
Playground.
Yep. Hallways. Bathroom?
Bus.
Honestly, yes. Bus is a big one, and hallways as well.
Hallways, yes.
Probably unstructured at times.
Yeah, exactly. Talking about your own devices.
And one of the reasons why those things are important, when we look at what the children are going to at Crittenham, right, kind of continuum of that freedom, that independence, whatever you may, we're trying to expose kids to more opportunities that want us to have that, right? We've done some structural things we talked about before with, you know, fifth graders walking in the hallways by themselves, fifth graders earning the right to sit and lunch wherever they want. And I think this is another good example of being very explicit with instruction and then letting them figure that out, where do I do these things? Because ultimately, our job is to prepare them for sixth grade.
All right. So you see every third grade student, although it's the cycle, so every third grade student has access to this. This is your second year implementing it. Have you, what are you noticing with how third graders and now those students who are in fourth grade are responding to the curriculum?
Yeah, I think across the board, all the grade levels, they really enjoy the curriculum and the activities. They're engaging, like Dave was saying, they really want them to exit, like discussion activities, great, but how are you gonna exit in active purpose with that trait? But I think the biggest difference I've noticed with my push-in to the fourth and fifth grade is last year, now they have that foundation. Third grade in encore really allows me to lay that foundation of going through all the traits, because we get to touch upon all of them. So then when I go in in fourth grade, sure, maybe in third grade, we talked about being a flexible thinker and taking other people's perspective for respect. Then in fourth grade, we build on that and practice, you know, peaceful and respectful conflict resolution. So it's nice to see the students remember what we did last year and to be able to build on that as, you know, our second year into Character Strong. I think that's been one of my favorite parts this year, just seeing them remember and be excited to jump back into it.
So now teachers will approach you in fourth grade or fifth grade to come in and do some particular lessons?
Yeah.
How was that for you? Is that, you know, so that they'll give you topics like...
Yeah, stress management was the most recent one. Being up standard, courage was one early in the year. But even third grade, if, you know, I have a cycle early in the year, if they need a refresher, and a third grade teacher has a need, then I can come in and touch upon something again. So for all the grade levels, as needed, I'm happy to always go in.
So are you finding now that you're in your second year, and now two-thirds of the building are familiar with you, and the students have had you? You must get to know students, and do they approach you if they want to talk? Where does that happen? What's that about?
Everywhere. Everywhere. No, it's been great the second year, and I think they're definitely more comfortable. Again, third grade, I know the entire fourth grade now, just from last year from encore, but even doing more push-in lessons, I'm seeing more fifth graders that maybe I didn't see last year. But if I walk into the cafeteria, guaranteed to get a couple, "Can we talk later? Or can we talk right now? Can we go to your room? Can you sit down here?" So they definitely have that comfort factor, which is most important to me, that they know they can come and seek me out for help.
Are you getting feedback from the teachers as far as how these lessons are going for the kids? Or specific examples of how the kids are using the lessons that you're giving them?
Yeah, some teachers even, they'll ask for, like, there is an example, at the end of conflict resolution, the tree, the tree of choices. We did this in fourth grade. After we did it, a teacher, she had some needs in her class, and she was like, "Can I please have a copy of this?" And she, so that she was referencing it as things came up in the classroom, you know, later in that month. So, yeah.
So you mentioned, Annie, that you're doing third grade encore. Are you doing fourth and fifth grade in encore as well?
Fourth and fifth grade is a push-in model.
So it's just a push-in?
Yes.
So only if you're asked by a teacher?
Oh, we have a scheduled lesson, but then in addition, as needed, they're always welcome to.
How often are you pushing in?
It's right now, the base is every other month. But it's, again, as needed, teachers will let me know if they need something else, and I...
So each class sees you every other month?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And it teaches skills like resiliency and... Sorry.
No, no, it's a great question. The, you know, I think it speaks to all of these things. You know, we talk about these words, and these are, these are words like being a good citizen, right? Like, these are all words we could probably all come up with. And I think it's just been nice, because I think it speaks to the climate and culture and both of those things really in our building and what we're really trying to, again, ultimately prepare them for sixth grade. You have to take accountability for things. It's okay to make a mistake. Who do I go to? I have my teacher, I also have Ms. Schmidt. I think it's just the openness, I think, from, if I go back to when I first started as a counselor 15, 16 years ago, you know, there might have been more of a stigma attached to like, "Okay, I need to go speak to the counselor." I just don't see it. I think that's to Annie, but also the program of just what we're trying to accomplish here, where the kids are, kids are talking, which is a good thing. I mean, it wasn't an easy few years for anybody. I think the kids are looking for those relationships.
One question for you. So if we're talking about chemistry, there's a really clear delineation between sort of home and school, and it's just very, very clear. With character education, I think if you look across the country, like, one of the, one of the debates that people have out there, or you see it in the newspaper or TV, is, are the lines, you know, blurring too much? And where is the line? So my question is twofold, because I think you've touched on so many issues that are so important for our students. Reduction of stress, anxiety, anti-bullying, conflict resolution, showing respect. These are all very important, right? But I guess through either site-based or through just parent feedback as you piloted, any sort of parent input that you've gotten that's been helpful? And then just when you sort of think about that potential issue that could be in some community members' minds, just how do you think about that as you sort of construct a program so that it really is comforting to people that, you know, these are, these are skills that we truly need in our school because they're so fundamental to the community, to the culture, and to the success of kids as they graduate and go into the real world?
Great question. And I think the accessibility of phone calls to, I think, with parents, I think has been a good model for success. Annie and I will call parents together sometimes. Annie will partner with teachers a lot to talk to parents. So we're trying to look for that school partnership all the time. It's an interesting question to really, do we think about, how could we gauge more feedback from parents? We haven't done that specifically with this. I think it would be, I think we would get positive feedback because of all these things we're trying to help these youngsters kind of, kind of prepare for. And I think of your question, I remember you asked, I think it was in the fall, about how do we, how do we gauge the success of this? Or do you look at the data of how do you measure these soft skills, social emotion, whatever you may? That's a tough thing to measure. But I always come back to, again, the accessibility of not only now teachers to collaborate with someone that has a specialty in this area that is now knows these kids really well, but also just how many kids you see. That's, I still think, a good gauge of success. Along with the accountability, I think, when I was an assistant principal and occasionally when I have to get involved, if a child needs a consequence, of how are kids now owning that and saying, you know what? I'm comfortable to come talk to Ms. Palmer, Mr. Mack about this. I know Ms. Schmidt will be in that. The kid for me will work through it. I think that, again, just speaks to the culture and climate at Wampus. So I don't know if I answered your question directly, but I think it's something we need to continue to look at, how are we measuring this?
Scott, I know from site-based team, and we've been studying it for the last two years. We have about two dozen parents who have been involved in that, and they all have been advocating strongly for the character and the principles. Like, we need to add this to, you know, this character trait, and this to it. So they feel, at least from that group, that this is important for us in the community and that it helps our kids. And Dave, if you go back a slide to the previous one, I'm just struck by how many of those items really deal with executive function, which is something we've also been working really hard on in the schools. When you've got that sort of middle one, be strong. I think everything there could be classified under executive function and following directions, and focusing, and organization, and goal setting. And up above, you have stress management. You know, so you have a lot of those items that really deal with kids and their cognition and helping kids regulate. And then you have the whole regulating emotion piece, which is work we were doing 10 years ago with the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, you know, brackets work, which teachers and parents all focus. This is terrific work for us to be doing with our kids to help them.
Is this also a part of the community building that's going on at this school?
Yeah, so I know Ms. Palmer did a community meeting or assembly back on leadership earlier in the year. I just did one on being your best self, and we try to continuously talk the same type of language. And even on our reflection sheets now, I give Ms. Palmer all the credit in the world for it. She has all those characteristics now on the reflection sheet if a child has to meet with her about, okay, let's pick a characteristic, like, how are we gonna reflect on this? How are we gonna grow? What did you talk about? You know, what did you, what do you remember from this? And it just gives those kids those checkpoints, like, this is a safe place. I'm gonna own this, I'm reflecting on it, and we're moving forward in a positive way.
I was also just gonna ask if there's, if you're finding that within the structured curriculum, if there's sort of wiggle room so that when those inevitable situations come up on the playground, or, you know, you see if there's a scuffle between some kids or there's a group of kids who maybe made some questionable choices or whatever, are you finding that the sort of basis of this curriculum is allowing you to kind of go in the specific direction to kind of address specific situations that come up in the school with certain kids?
Yeah. We were talking a bit too last week as we were preparing for this and talking about it, and the flexibility within the program, I think that even comes back to what Gina and I really liked about this program. And we looked at it with the whole group, was they have like, hey, these are the lessons, but there's flexibility. And they also updated a lot. I know the summer they spent, and we've only had it for one year, the, and also all the research that's behind this, they had brackets research in there. All this is based on those things. So there is the flexibility based on the need, which I think is great, because we can do the curriculum, but hey, what do you need for your class? Because what you need in your class of fourth grade might be different than yours. And that's okay. That's what makes elementary school unique.
That's great.
Is this gonna go to the parents in the newsletter? Aside from being here, is this gonna also be at the principal's coffee?
So we, did we speak, we spoke about Character Strong last year, I believe, at the principal's coffee. We haven't yet. This, that's a good idea.
So I can also talk to Melissa's question as a parent. You know, there's definitely a language difference between last year and this year, right? In third grade, conflict resolution was more like, "Fine, sorry." Like, "You're making me say sorry." And I don't really mean it, right? And now it's definitely, right? Like, Dave and I were talking about this last week. There's definitely a progression to, like, I understand why I'm, like, it's not just someone's making me, this is how, this is how I could have behaved differently. Like, there was a huge change in that conversation that I absolutely noticed.
It's like a little more metacognition, maybe? They're sort of understanding themselves better, is that what you're saying?
Understanding themselves, understanding and having the language to...
To take ownership.
And, yeah, to take on, to, exactly, to take ownership.
Giving them that language trick. Yeah, that's great.
And just the conflict resolution piece. I mean, I just, I definitely saw that put into practice.
That's great. Very interesting.
Yeah, Mark Breckin always talked about that in his work, which is expanding our vocabulary for emotions. Instead of just saying, "I'm mad." Well, are you mad, or are you embarrassed, or frustrated?
Isn't it name it and tame it?
You're right. So trying to dig down to more specific emotions that are more descriptive of how you actually feel. That we, as a society, don't have a very vast, I mean, I forget his statistics, but he talks about just the finite number of words we have to describe emotions when there's so many more. So that's part of, I think, this, is giving kids the language and the tools. When we teach executive function, we're teaching kids tools, thinking tools, like, how do you set goals? How do you manage your time? How do you manage your stress and regulate emotions? Those are all skills we can teach kids, and part of that is the common language in doing so and creating new habits in school. You were sharing a story about a kid who came and wrote you a note recently.
He did, yes.
Which I...
The language of, they, you know, took accountability for a misstep and moving forward in a positive way. I think that is a big change in the last few years.
Right.
And this program came about from the BHF? Or is it a pilot from the school?
No, we have just piloted this program, so, yeah. So I think we purchased the pilot materials. We're pitching them to us. So we've been piloting this, I mean, I guess as a, thinking about going forward. We plan to continue, I mean, I just want to ask you how you're thinking, Dave, in terms of your mindset in terms of timing. So we're not quite ready to make a recommendation to the board yet. What's your thinking in terms of how much more you want to see of this? This is our second year of the pilot.
Well, I feel good about it. But I do think it's important to go through one whole cycle with those children that first got it in third grade, they're in fourth, they'll be in fifth next year. Because of many of the questions you're asking, you know, how do we, how do we connect it to, you know, more in home, for home, you know, with families? How do we look at school leadership, right? The mission statement now has leadership in it. You know, how do we connect that to our community meetings? What's the extension to Crittenton when they have their models of push-in? How is an extension to Coman Hill? I know they've been piloted in a bit in second grade. So how do we really, you know, look at all those branching out? I think will be important in the next year, but I think we've had some good progress. And I think with all of this, the relationships that kids now have with the school counselor, I think is, the combination of the two is, it's been wonderful.
Yeah, so I think part of the collection, not to be so hard on yourself about how we know this is working, I think part of that is.
Keep thinking about it.
Yeah, it's good to think.
Your sense of the environment at the school and, you know, if you're noticing just that language over time. And those are things that do take time to build, but I think it is good to see a cycle through from third to fifth grade and for you as a school to be able to reflect on that language and behaviors and what are your observations as a school in terms of how kids are responding to this? And then are there areas maybe they're not responding and is there anything we can use with this and with any to help? So I want to thank, I want to thank you for being so diligent about this. This is one of the most intensive pilots we've done in Ohio over multiple years, which is good to do and take our time, we're in no rush. We are piloting this this year in second grade over at Coman Hill and Gina and I just met with, I need to talk about what that might look like next year as a pilot and coming up with some new ways to think about implementing it. At Coman Hill, that might be different than Wampus. So we were using basically a Wampus push-in model in second grade and we have some ideas for making it more frequent with students as they go, as we pilot this from kindergarten to first grade and second grade.
That'll make a transition easier between schools if it's the same language starting from the beginning.
And the program's really accessible to a lot of grade levels.
You've got leadership for fifth, it would be so cute to have them go, maybe the fifth graders go talk to the second graders.
Exactly, there you go. Sort of thinking things like that.
We have fifth graders coming to us, wanting to run community meetings. I think it's great. They want to like, I have an idea, tell me about it.
That's wonderful.
And Kani, kudos to you because without the relationships, right, you know, the kids wouldn't be telling. So your availability and your coachability is so important, so thanks.
Thank you. How does trust you build in the teachers that you want to come into their classrooms? It's been great. It's not easy. How many teachers are at Wampus?
Well, we have 22 sections and then we have six special ed teachers and then a handful of specials as well, so we're probably 45.
Wow. Well, thank you for making this.
Thank you so much.
That's your gig.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good job.
Have a good night everyone.
Have a good night, you too. You're welcome to stay. Thank you. Have a good night. Have a good night, guys.
So this brings us to unfinished business, 10.1. They have a motion to adopt as a second read policies, 0150 HIV AIDS, 4315.1 HIV AIDS Instruction, 8123 Precautions and Procedures for Exposure to Blood and Bodily Fluids, 4327 Homebound Instruction, 6830 Expense Reimbursement, 6830.1 Expense Reimbursement and 6830-R Expense Reimbursement Regulation. So moved.
So.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the board regarding the second read of these policies? Anyone want to add anything?
Nope.
May I have a motion to approve the following, the policies I just read out? May I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right. That brings us to news. Oh no, that brings us to the amended agenda, 10.2, the second read of the 2023-24 district calendar, which I notice only is one week at the holidays.
One and a half.
One and a half.
Oh, you added to half or the half is on?
It was there. It was there. 10 days or something, 12 days, right?
But not two weekends.
Unless you take your kids out of school.
No, we don't do that.
Are there any questions regarding the calendar? If I got out to the community just as a draft, but.
And aside from regions, it probably will remain the same. We just have to await the region's calendar.
The regions we get in there, but in terms of specific tasks, we'll, we'll find that out from the way to poster.
Yep. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the second read of the 2023-24 district calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We have a calendar in place.
There you go.
That now brings us to new business, number 11, Discussion Information Based Site-Based Teams Media Report.
Sure. So I just have a few things to announce. Site-based team, uh, site-based team meetings continue and I can just explain to the public again, we have district-wide site-based team that meets a couple of times a year and then each building has a building of a site-based team that works on building goals. So we come together and sometimes work on goals as a district, as I mentioned in our previous segment, that the last couple of years we've been talking a lot about character education, reviewing various models and research on character education. We did a book read two years ago around Permission in the Field, which was Mark Brackett's book, which was well received by our parents. And some of that work has been done, followed up with at the building level. So at Coman Hill, for example, they have been piloting the Character Strong and looking at character this year. At Wampus, they've, site-based team has been looking specifically at student behaviors and they've been looking at the code of conduct and thinking about how they can indicate the expectations of behavior at Wampus. At the middle school, Kim Lappel and Angelo have been working on, also there, they have their, they were essential question that they ask at Crittenton about balancing that rigor with the wellness as well. And they've been working on how they continue to build self-confidence in students, how they develop good communication skills and how to be good caring friends and neighbors and classmates. And that's been their focus as a site-based team. And then at the high school, Chris has been engaging his faculty, his teachers and the administrators around the notion of leadership. Since that went into the mission statement, he's been talking to the faculty and teachers and administrators and the parents about what that leadership means to them. And he's been teasing out some of the skills and behaviors of leadership. And we'll be continuing that work as a district this summer and into next year as we develop a framework for leadership K-12. So that's been really great work. I attended his faculty meeting last week and it was a nice, really great engagement around what leadership skills look like with the faculty. So it's been a busy year with the site-based team. This Thursday on the February 9th, we have our second site-based team meeting. I am devoting that to another public session around literacy. So we will be joined by our expert consultants. We will be talking about some instructional models at the elementary levels and again, it's open to the public as well. So I hope parents will attend and will engage in some good discussion and thinking around what literacy looks like kindergarten through fifth grade.
When is that time?
So that's Thursday at 4:00 PM at the high school.
And is it going to be live streamed or?
No, it's, we don't record the site-based team meetings. I didn't plan to record it this time, but the public's welcome to come and there'll be site-based team members there as well. And that's it for site-based team.
All right, let's move on to staff reports.
Madam supervisor?
Hi, Tim, I'll eat. It's like 8:05, I think.
There you go.
It's okay.
If you.
Thanks.
You can use them.
Well, I actually need to. Well, I can do it here, it's okay. So at this, well, actually, two meetings ago, I was ready to talk about board goals, but we've had very full meetings, so I reserved it to tonight to talk about just progress at the board as we're making.
Do you want me to show this or?
Okay, sure. Progress we've been making, remember the first area is excellence in teaching and learning and the first section was about new curriculum implementation and innovation in teaching and learning, just by way of a list, because it is a long list. So reviewing the current literacy curriculum K to five, some progress to date of the board is convening the literacy study group, thank you, Tim, and administrators who have helped with the teachers who are on that committee and parents who joined us to study research-based literacy practices. That has been so informative and a good collaborative effort on the part of the district with kids and these learning specialists, which is great. We conducted additional public meetings to continue discussing literacy for the greater community. We had a 30-hour training course at the graduate level for all the K-5 teachers in special education and the reading specialists. So that was 22 faculty members in the Orton-Gillingham method. And we have many people who are going on to the next level of the Orton-Gillingham method. We offered additional professional learning opportunities for faculty on the research-based practices and we offered this advanced training in Orton-Gillingham now. We trained the teachers in the foundations program, that's the FOMICs curriculum, and developed a five-year literacy study plan focusing on the evaluation and revision and refining of our K-5 curriculum and instructional practices. It's not just about curriculum, but how we're teaching that curriculum. For the second one, review and evaluate the current reading and math diagnostic and screening tools. We're conducting an assessment audit on E L A with one of our consultants and we're evaluating our math assessments and universal screening tools for incoming kindergarten children. And evaluating the current K-5 science curriculum and the New York State standards in science. The three to five science reps evaluated four science programs and now narrowed it down to two. And we're discussing site visits with districts who use these two programs. We also have the K-2 science teachers conducting a gap analysis between the new science standards and our current curriculum. And Wampus in year two, moving on to the K-5 character education, we had our examples tonight, year two of piloting Character Strong and everything that was said here tonight. I don't think I have to say more. And K to eight, review and evaluate the current health education curriculum. Rob and the consultants have been reviewing the health curriculum with the health education teachers and they facilitated many meetings on best practices. The teachers have been updating their curriculum and their maps to align with the changes. And the focus has really been a shift from content-based instruction to skill-based health instruction, right? Content to skill, which I think is where our kids really need to be. The consultants have been collaborating with the health coordinators for age-appropriate curriculum, we had a conversation about that earlier, to meet the requirements of Aaron's Law, just to teach about child sexual abuse and exploitation, but at, at a level that is appropriate for the children in that age. Many times not saying words like that at all, but, you know, safe conversations, safe people, stranger danger, these are all the things that we've been doing in our district, so it's not a change. And then revise XPOD and SDL at HCC. So they've implemented, you remember Kim's long discussion last time about the reflection component of the individual investment time? They refine the ways they support the executive functioning and develop instructional methods. SDL, increased academic time so that the teachers can call back students for additional help or increased enrichment opportunities for kids during that time. And then 912, the new entrepreneurship program, the study and plan of year two of the program. I mean, talk about something that's been, it's like an absolute great opportunity for the kids involved, the teachers who are teaching it, the administrators who are helping to facilitate it, and especially the 30 mentors.
Community members.
Yeah, they're community members who are coming out to support and help our kids and who are in the field themselves. I mean, we're, we're just in awe of some of the things that they're able to say to the kids that they're doing. So it's, so we have that program with 63 students right now, three teachers who were trained last summer. And we have, they were engaged in mid-year retreat last week to plan for the first pitch event in February and also the discussion of our curriculum for year two. And Tim, thank you so much for supporting that program. Unbelievable.
Pleasure.
Studying college admissions data and engaging in discussions with colleges and universities. Guides Department hosted 120 colleges this year and after each visit, they discussed with the admissions officer the changes that are occurring on the college campuses to guide student decisions, the changes in the Byron Hills profiles such as the addition of an entrepreneurship program. It's very important for us to go out there and share the things that we're doing and how we're changing. And we gather information about the colleges, like areas of focus for specific admissions departments, for example, like women in engineering, if that's going to be a focus in our college and what we can be looking for for our students. And then they are counselors scheduling spring tours right now, so they're looking at data and planning the colleges to target and the questions to ask. So I like the post-COVID full resurgence of that word that Christine was doing.
Because cancer's going to, to, to the colleges.
Yep.
I wonder when the college center's going to open? They used to have like parents come in and help run the college center. I wonder if that'll.
Yeah, they're doing that, but they're not having, I don't know if the parents are coming in.
Yeah, their parents are coming in. They're meeting individually with, with the council.
No, this was a volunteer thing where they would sit in the college career center to sort of, sort of come help out. But now we're having, I think it's just much more structured.
I'd like to get the colleges going in, yeah.
Sounds great.
And world language, evaluate and revise the curriculum and instructional practices. So we contracted with somebody who's been working with Melissa Stahl over the summer and had two sessions with the teachers there focused on developing a common language to support students at a high level of proficiency and then having common instructional units. This is something that seems to be a big problem, instructional units. And then also they're outlining what is it about vocabulary and culture and grammar and summative assessments that are really aligned with New York State world language standards. And the evaluation of the science curriculum. Deb Kay leading her department through the evaluation of the curriculum through Tri-State's brain work. So we established a date for that visit in the fall of 2024 and that is when Tri-State's will come in and we will.
Critical friends.
Critical friends and we will express to them the work that we are doing and they will ask critical questions and then they will give us feedback about the work we're doing in the direction we think we want to go. So that, that is an incredible growth opportunity for science department and they are training in the Tri-State's model this spring, so all of the science teachers will have training in what that model looks like. And it's a self-assessment model where you bring your critical friends in to help you think. And we'll be collecting evidence to share with them. And then K-12, guidelines for curriculum and instruction. Policy 4200 was updated. Tim maintains that curriculum review cycle that we all love. Tim's evaluating the process for decisions and will review with the administrative team for our board August 30th board meeting, right? Just getting our curriculum together and our goals. Bringing back art and music programs post-COVID. Kudos to Pete Pollux and all of the music teachers. I have some student highlights on that, the Strings Festival that's going on right now that is involving over 400 kids in the district, sponsored by the B H F. Really a great opportunity for these kids to be playing together. They're meeting across buildings and performing together. Orchestra and chorus are slated for this February and then band's going to be in March. And the concerts are back in full force and the houses have been full and ensembles will participate in their adjudication events, which we're excited about at the state level. And we have the Armac Outdoor Art Show and other public art events that we will be participating in. And the art show that we had here was extraordinary, always. Yeah. I always pick my favorite piece when I go. I have them this time. All right. And then data to inform our decision-making. So we have the dashboard educlimer. We thought it was kind of cumbersome, it wasn't really meeting our needs of what we wanted to do, so we're seeking other options. We purchased branching minds just recently and are in the process of onboarding that and we'll be sharing that in more detail in a, in a board meeting. It'll be more practical for us to use with instructional support teams for students, warehousing information in the data and then looking at their diagnostic assessments. But one thing that we have learned is diagnostic assessments have to have fidelity in each person giving that assessment for the assessment to really be valid, right? So we're, we're really focusing a lot on reader reliability and our teachers are very strong at looking at that together. And we have the data story. Teachers at HCC are collaborating on an area of focus for collecting student performance data. They're sharing projects that capture one of the 21st century skills and they're finding ways to share that and report out on student progress to parents. I don't know if any middle school parents have received any of that yet, but there are videos that are being sent. We continue to focus on teacher professional learning. We also are supporting, as I shared with the board, talking to some of our current teachers about pursuing their degrees in administration. We have a high interest rate in that right now with a couple of people who are really good thinkers and collaborators with other teachers and I think will be incredibly strong because, you know, we're all not going to be sitting here forever. Somebody, somebody else has to do it at some time.
We totally hope.
Yeah. And the social emotional learning, I don't need to talk too much about that because I think we've had that conversation with high school, middle school and we've heard a lot from the elementary school. And I would say the last thing is, I mean, we, I've been reporting out on security, social emotional learning we did and cybersecurity. And then I would say if we look at fiscal accountability, we are looking at plans for the capital projects. Kelly's been working hard on the water pipe replacement process up at Coman Hill, a paving project on this summer, other capital. We're replacing sidewalks at Wampus and at Crittenton and then we're still waiting on the water system at the high school. Everything's in place for that. Kelly's going to start after this budget preparing the rollout of the high school expansion project so we can start sharing that more publicly. I'll share that with the Education Foundation too at my next meeting next week, pictures that I showed you last time. So we've been doing a lot of work on that. We've been looking at our budget and our tax implications and tonight in our pre-meeting, we went over our, our revenue and what that's going to look like and potential tax implications for the community. So I would say A-plus to the board on, on all of your progress on these goals. That's a lot and we're only in the middle of February even though it feels like April.
It's a team effort.
Yes.
I appreciate the team effort.
All right. So thank you and, and thanks to Kim, Kelly and Gina for all your work to support the board goals.
Any other reports?
I just have student highlights. Yes. Can you get any better than this? Samantha Shavitz receiving the neuroscience research prize? I think they didn't have that when I was little or maybe we would have gotten that too. She investigated the focused ultrasound with microbubbles as a method to improve brain cancer treatment by allowing therapeutic drugs to more easily cast through the blood-brain barrier, a protective layer for the brain. Just incredible, she's invited to attend the American Academy of Neurology Annual Conference of Boston to present her work in the spring.
Wow, congratulations.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Not only impressive, I've had people reach out to me to say, I saw that student of yours on TV, Samantha, she's brilliant. Something about the brain. 12 Coman Hill seniors win awards at regional science competition. So we have our regional winners, first place, second, third, fourth, fifth, we have quite a few people on here. And in March, Caleb, Alaska, Chloe and Ethan are going to compete as presenters in the JSHS in Albany for a place in Virginia competition in April. And then we also have our local winners. These are not the local winners, some are, one, yes, but not all, right? So I don't want you to get confused with the picture and the three names. But we also have local winners for first place and second place. So congratulations. And this is the time of year where first we have Regeneron top scholars and then we move forward to JSHS. And then, I mean, the accolades just kind of keep pouring in for science research from here on.
I want to thank the science research teachers and Stephanie Greenbaum for providing more and more opportunities for students. And that was a big goal of hers when she became director was more opportunities for more kids to showcase their work.
Right. And it's not about winning all these awards. It's about, because not everybody wins awards. It's about going and presenting your work and being invested in the work that you're presenting to other people.
That experience a lot.
Yeah. It's a life skill that's incredible. They happen to receive a lot of awards, which is pretty amazing. But the process itself is
It's a mystical life skill.
Is what's going to take them through to the rest of their lifetime. You know, like Mia's an incredible board member, but she lost her certificate that she was given, right? But she'll always remember her board practice. You'll always remember everything you did on the board.
I slept it on the fridge like I told you I would.
You can put your name on mine.
All right. This is a great new one, Scholastic Art Writing Awards. So they've had this since the early 1920s. And there is an esteemed group of alumni from this Scholastic Art Writing Award. Yeah. Interesting, right? Andy Warhol, Stephen King, Joyce Carol Oates. I mean, really, I didn't know that. And then we have Region at Large East Art Awards. And they are silver keys, honorable mention and gold keys. If you look at Ruby Smallheiser on the bottom, two gold keys for her photography. And we've just had a bunch of other distinctions in there as well, which is great. And then Hudson to Haasatonic Region Writing Award. Sorry, I'm getting all time twisted. We have a gold key for A Love Story for Chronically Anxious and honorable mention for Widow. So two of our students, Samara and Trudy, are receiving those awards. Pretty amazing. And thank you to Brian Melso for superimposing the key with wings on it. Only Brian Melso can do that. All right. The District Strings Festival, I spoke about before. And we want to also thank the Education Foundation for their generosity and these tabletop loop pedals that they're introducing in the curriculum right now, which really help with songwriting and repetition in songs.
It's transferable.
Incredible. And here are kids in action, remember, playing cross buildings. Fantastic. Smiling faces, look at that.
So nice to see them together.
It's the best, right? I mean, think about two or three years ago. Oh, and I'm with Declan.
Kindergarten teacher.
Declan is teaching kindergarten and he was teaching Big P, Little P. And then he was fantastic at every letter that he was teaching. And by the way, you can't see it here, but the teacher is sitting on the side of the room to the left. She's nowhere near him when he's teaching the class. And this is part of the foundation's work where the children stand in front of the class and they teach a specific part of it. And so what Declan was doing was like, Big M, Little M, I see Melissa. He was calling out his classmates and if they didn't have a name with the letter that he was doing, he would pick something else. And the kids were repeating after him and they were doing like, Big M, Little M to get a sense of what the words are. I mean, he was just, he was phenomenal and I want to offer him a job.
Is that the 2035?
That is.
Yeah.
Presentational.
I know. It's just insane.
Yeah.
Yeah. 2035.
Yeah, that's right, Jason.
Saw that too, bless grin.
All right. And here we have our LCC students from the high school. They had a Valentine's Day mason jar sale where they were selling mason jars filled with cookie mix to make either M and M cookies, another kind of cookie also. And then they had the hot cocoa ones, which were really, they were a hot seller up here at the district office. So thank you to our students and our staff for selling those. And the students are coming tomorrow or Thursday. I'm not sure which day or maybe it's Thursday or Friday. They're coming to bring up, bring up there.
I have an M and M cookie coming.
I will hold it for you, you know. And our track and field update. We have two sophomores, you'll notice here. Abhi Rhandu is now ranked second fastest in the 600 meters in the school history and qualified for the New Balance National Championships. And Ryan Singer, also a sophomore, now ranked third fastest in school history in the 55-meter dash.
They're incredible.
That is amazing.
But he's incredible.
And Go Bugcast, that's Mr. Walsh. And that is it for me. You're all set. Well done. Deputies.
I have a few things to talk about. First, you have on your desk this year's special recognition document, the annual recognition that highlights college admissions, district recognition, faculty, student recognition. And sort of, for me, this is a special document. We put it together so we could show our community the value added to a Byron Hills education. It's not just, you know, if you go to Byron Hills or you might as well go anywhere, if you go here, you get something out of it. And this really shows that highlight. So we'd like to have this put together every year as sort of an ongoing record of that value added to a Byron Hills education. So as you read through this, it's pretty impressive. We keep having to think of ways to shorten it and edit the list because this could go on forever, but we have all of these documents. In fact, I just thought I should put the history of them on the website.
And you know what? We should talk to Brian about putting something in the spectrum when it goes out with like a QR code so that people can access this.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's such a great piece every year. And thanks to Colin for helping you put that together.
My secretary, Colin O'Connor, works hard on this. I passed his desk for about the last month. He's constantly updating things and looking at it, proofreading it, swapping out pictures and adding texts. They're getting information from all of our administrators and teachers about it. So it's a great document and pride in our district. So we give that to you and we'll circulate that to our community. Thank you for that. I have a few other things, curricular related, I want to update you on. So the first thing I want to talk about is the SEAL of civic readiness. So this is something offered by New York State Ed and they were piloting it over the last two years. And if you recall, our social studies department has been working on historical thinking skills. And I've talked about the work of Jen Leighton, our social studies chairperson, working on historical thinking skills. And part of that historical thinking skills is civic knowledge and trying to find ways to enhance our students' civic knowledge and skills around civics education. So when New York State came out with the SEAL, we were sort of intrigued by it. So Jen has been working diligently on it with Chris and Kim at the middle school. So I want to go through a few items about it and talk about where we are thinking about this for next year. So first of all, it's really a way to offer distinction to students who really focus on civics. And so it's really around gate, you know, increasing your civic knowledge, enhancing your skills in civics, you know, developing a civic mindset, like the importance of being involved and getting back to the community and then having experiences in civics. So it's all geared around that and recognizing students who really focus on that during their sixth through 12th years in school. So the requirements for order like this, there's two sides of this chart. There's civic knowledge on one side and civic participation on the others. And each of these different events are given points. And you have to get at least two points from the left side of this under civic knowledge and at least two points on the right side. The other two points can come from anywhere. So those things could be that you took four credits of social studies at the high school and then you get one point under civic knowledge. If you take some of the advanced courses we offer, we have five AP courses in history that would count and have been approved by the state for credits. So if you take, what do we have? We have AP US History, we have AP World History, AP US Government Politics and a few others taking those courses, then we'd get you a half a point on that side. And then there's also ways to do a research project around civic knowledge. And so Jen this year has been working with her department on identifying opportunities in our curriculum where we could integrate a research project or if you see on the right side, integrating some capstone projects or other projects that involve civic participation. So she's come up with sort of a template and has her teachers working on that. So what I like about that as a department is one of the benefits of this, which I'll go to this slide, sort of why might this be interesting to us? So one of the things is we believe that this directly relates to our mission statement to become productive citizens and leaders of the 21st century. So we think it fosters those skills of civics. It links directly to the 21st century skills that we talk about. I talk a lot here about our programs, especially new programs like startup and global scholars, which talk about authentic learning experiences for students. They give them real, authentic learning opportunities. Students have to reflect on their learning and their role in the world. And this piece about connecting the middle school to the high school. So as Jen has been doing this work this past year with her department, she's noticing that it's helping create that thread of civics throughout the social studies curriculum as the teachers are designing ways to embed this in the courses. So there's opportunities for every student to have access to this should they choose to make that a focus. So that's been a nice thread that we didn't really anticipate when we first took this on, but it's actually nice for the curriculum and Jen's found that with the teachers.
Do students apply to this?
So there's a process. They don't necessarily apply student stuff, but if students are interested, we have to have a system for tracking their accumulation of points. I'll talk about that on the next slide, so I think. So how this is implemented, first there's an application process, which we have to identify some things. I don't think that part's really too hard. And then we establish a SEAL of civic readiness committee. And that committee works on such things as a system for tracking progress. So if students accumulate a point, how do we keep track of that? So that we're not at the senior year trying to go back and scramble and find these things. We want to have a way that feeds into a spreadsheet every year where the teacher submits something, the kid has to submit something and then it goes into a spreadsheet. So kids would self-track and monitor, but we would oversee that with this committee. So that's something we're trying to simplify.
I'm sorry, would there be like a teacher mentor for each student who's doing it?
You don't have to have a mentor for it, no. But what you have to have, so if, we have to develop when we go to next steps, these are some of the things we have to do. Establishing a committee, which would be overseen by Jen Leighton. Social studies, teachers would be involved, Chris Wolf should be involved as well. We're looking now for current opportunities that already existed in our curriculum and then what are some new opportunities we'd have to create? But then that developing and monitoring student progress as part of it, we're going to try to automate that as best as we can. So students like submit to a survey and the teachers would provide that. So after the teacher does a capstone project, for example, the students want to submit for the SEAL, they enter it in there, the teacher signs off that the kid did it. Because we have to create evaluation criteria for the things that are subjective. If they take a course and they pass, we know they get that point. But if they do a project, we have to have evaluation criteria against which we measure. So that's something that the teacher would do and submit and validate that the kid earned that point or had a point. And that would feed the spreadsheet. So that's something Jen will create with the committee and then have her teachers do it certain times throughout the year.
And then we get the SEAL senior year.
And then it goes on, so that SEAL would go on their senior year. So probably earlier than the senior year because you want to have that identified when you're applying to colleges that you have the SEAL. So that's an advantage of it in a way is that you show an area of focus to the state. So that's just an extra piece that students can say, I really focused on civics and here's three things I did that were really exciting. I had to create this project or I got involved in this piece.
Which will enroll our schools.
So if the applications do in August?
That's our application as a district. So every year the district has to apply to be eligible to recommend students for the SEAL.
So when you get it up and running?
So we are anticipating to do this next year. So we haven't committed yet. We're still sort of studying if this is manageable and feasible to implement and also if we feel it's a benefit to our students. And our feeling is we think our kids would benefit by this.
And are you thinking to implement it with middle schoolers next year or everybody?
We would open it up. It's going to be hard. We have to identify that. That's a good point because we can't open it up to just, okay, if you're a senior now next year because we'd have to go back and we didn't have the pieces in place to evaluate it. So students could start doing some of those capstone and research projects next year. So it might take yet another year till it would be available to students. So we might go to go back and at least look at transcripts in terms of coursework, which could get them kids' points. And if they have a year to do the other pieces that are either research-based, like a paper presentation or service project, that might take a year to get them there. So we want to start it next year. It could be a two years till we see students actually receiving this station.
So it's really for the freshman, the entering, the freshman now?
Yeah, maybe sophomores maybe would be able to qualify. Not sure if they'd have enough time. We just have to sort of, we have to think through that logically. We think they might have enough exposure to things, but that would take them really committed to working on a few major projects.
And do colleges know what this is?
I don't, I think New York State colleges would. I think outside they wouldn't. But I think the benefit is, would be for this, for example. So we found in global scholars, what students do, their projects in global scholars, they tend, those are really like passion projects that kids care about. They end up talking a lot about that in their college interviews or writing about it on their college papers. So I think this could take that similar effect. If a kid really focuses on this and does some really great work around civics, it probably will find its way into the college essay or the college interviews. And then that becomes something admissions officers or those interviewing students really find interesting because it's unique and stands out. They're always looking for new pieces.
Sounds like a great opportunity.
So it's not so much the SEAL that's important to us because I think a Byron Hills education is worth a lot and says a lot to colleges. It's, they tend, what I would give is, we don't give advanced Regents diplomas like some schools do. We don't need to do that because colleges know that if you're graduating from Byron Hills, you most likely are advanced Regents. You've done enough Regents to earn that credit. So it's not the SEAL itself that's important. It's the experiences behind it that are important, that kids talk about, that they could mention. So it's more the distinction for students to put on their transfer. I did this, which could be a point to sort of raise interest from college admissions. So keep it simple. So that's where we are in that thinking. I'll let you know what we decide and if we apply for this, how it goes.
Great, thank you.
I want to talk about misinformation. So this was a question that came up a while ago from a board member who asked about if we teach misinformation and how students grapple with sort of the state of the world now with so much information we're abarted with, whether it's on social media, whether it's in the news, whether it's just in conversations or whether now with artificial intelligence tools that are out there that might say incorrect things. So I want to go through some areas in our curriculum where we feel we address this. So focus on the social studies department again. I've talked before with the historical thinking skills, I mentioned that earlier, the SEAL, that has been a focus for the last five years in the social studies department. The social studies department has five signposts. Signposts are like five, it's a framework for teaching historical thinking skills. And two directly relate to this topic. So signpost three is about corroborating your information. That means checking your sources against other sources. And also signpost five is about the reliability of the information you're presenting. And how do you look at things from different points of view? What's the audience, the purpose and the context? That has been an emphasis in the social studies department, sixth through 12 for the past five years. And they utilize this framework consistently and explicitly teach this framework to students in our social studies classes. In sixth grade, they do a unit on thinking critically about information. And they have a lesson where you're looking at this website that someone created, that lesson on that word there, not serema, which is really American backwards. It's sort of a fake, a fake town, a fake something where students look at this. And they, they don't really know it's fake and they're learning about it. And then there's clues along the way that it's fake. So they do this whole lesson around how to read for accuracy of information. So that's done with every sixth grader. In eighth grade, they look at evaluating sources and media bias in information. So all eighth graders are exposed to that. And ninth graders, Global Nine, they do a unit on fake news. And then in ninth grade mentor, all students look at social media and the information on social media. And then in some elective, like our global scholars courses, they work on corroborating information and talk about point of view in that curriculum. I talked about the SEAL of civic readiness, which would also be around looking at things from various points of view. And then all ninth grade students do a global issue speech where our library media specialist talks to the students about sources and where to get good information and how to use accurate sources as opposed to just Googling stuff and using information that might not be corroborated. So there's a lesson there. Science department through sixth through 12 talks about the evidence you use to support the claims that you make. So that's integrated in the scientific process. And then to put this up, so in AP Computer Science, they do lessons around cybersecurity technologies that mimic information. And now with artificial intelligence, we've read a lot about ChatGPT and what's happening there. That's actually adding some new interesting discussions in our district about how we're grappling with that. And then you'll see the rest of those items in italics. That comes from the digital fluency standards and those are directly related to making sure we're teaching students about biased searches, about information, about looking at sources and using search tools. That's directly related and we teach that in our, either in our technology classes or it's integrated in the classrooms as well. So there's a lot of different areas where we talk about. So there's a lot of different areas where we talk about systematically, all students get some exposure along the way to how we handle this type of information. So we'll get that over here, and then, one more thing, a favorite. So we're going to show a very short video, two-minute video of a student encoding. So our technology curriculum, we've been at least 10 years now into our K-12 technology curriculum, and I'm always amazed at how it just gets more sophisticated and more innovative year after year. So I happened to walk into Mr. Lovelace's technology class a few months ago and recorded this, he said, "Go talk to that student over there," so I pulled out my phone and I recorded him explaining to me what he was coding. So I'm going to show you this short video, what I want you to notice is how he relates what he's doing now to something he learned two years ago in a different class, and how he sort of talks about this as a passion. So I'm going to play this fifth grade student for you. Let me see, it might go to another screen there, and I just have to get my sound ready.
Hello, I am Ryan Torme, I coded a Led Zeppelin song for this thing to play, making everything at the right speed took a long time, so.
Right.
I've heard this song a million times, so I know the speed, but I have to like manually select this, then whatever the speed is, listen to it, if it's good, then yay, if it's not.
How were you programming the notes to play?
In third grade, the music teacher, my music teacher, Mrs. Sossino, because there was COVID, we didn't go anywhere, so we used this, and I played piano and guitar, so I know, I know, for example, this is C, this is E, that's A sharp, so I can just convert tools, go back in here, and then drag this, not out of the screen, drag this, for example, here, select note, what octave, and how fast it is. Another one I did, the Tacky Part Two: Eruption by Van Halen, like shreddiest song in the world. This took quite a while, because I had to program all the notes, get the right speed, but like, there's loops inside of loops, for example, this repeats forever, forever unless I stop it, these take a while, but once, if it feels really good, once I finish, because it's like, I just get to listen to my creation, and it just modified how long, how many times it repeats, how fast it was, and even the fastest one is not fast enough.
Right, so play that.
Okay, this is way faster.
That's great.
Unbelievable.
That might be the best kid video I've seen.
Yeah, that's a great one.
It just melted me out, it was like amazing, and it almost seemed scripted, he was just cold, and I just went up and said, "Hey, tell me about it." So you could see his passion, you can see how he's combined his passion for music with coding, figuring it out on his own, remembering what his teacher taught him two years ago.
Remembering her name two years ago.
If you learn nothing else with that on this one day, that's great.
It's pretty amazing.
Incredible.
Thank you, Sharon.
That's your report, that's a great report.
We gotta switch, we gotta follow up.
Some exciting numbers for us.
You're also on the high desk with the low chairs.
Yes. Good song choices, good parents. Just quickly, the governor released their budget about a week ago when we were first, just for Byron Hills, we're looking at about $400,000 increase in state aid, which is more than we've had in many years. That's really directly related to a change in the transportation aid ratio, so essentially we're getting more back from what we spent for transportation. We've been set at a minimum level for many years, the formula's changed based on essentially just increased at moment, I mean, an easy way to think about it, so we're getting more reimbursement for transportation, that's about $280,000 of that 404. And then just a small increase in foundation aid, the minimum increase, a 3% increase, that's about $65,000. So good news is we're getting additional funds of $404,000 in terms of revenue in state aid, it'll go to legislatures for their review and their revisions, I don't anticipate getting a lot more than what we're currently getting now, but you know, we'll discuss this further when we talk about revenues on March 28th. So, good news so far.
And the foundation aid formula is like this hotly contested item that everyone talks about, some, I was with a bunch of superintendents today, and different districts in Westchester got very different amounts of foundation aid, and that, there's a formula to it that everybody knows needs to be revised, is this still based on census data from 2001 or something like that?
I think it's 2009, yeah.
2009, so, and it takes into account a wealth factor and a bunch of other factors as well, so schools like Byron Hills get 3%, and what did that amount to, Kelly?
About $65,000.
$65,000, which nobody's going to, you know, give back $65,000, that's great.
But your Yonkers, your Portchester, those schools are getting tens of millions, like 14 million, 16 million.
And even Mamaroneck, I mean, Mamaroneck is giving, like, so there are other districts that are similar districts in Westchester, who because of the wealth ratio or something else are tipping more, are hiring with a lot of foundation aid. So it's going to, it's going to be a very different landscape out there from community to community as far as school budgets are concerned. We will, of course, do our best to be as fiscally responsible.
Absolutely.
Not just to be fiscally responsible.
No, we're not going to do our best, we will be, 100% will be.
And we have to, we've had a trailing record, a very good record of staying below the tax cap, and just really trying to budget our money carefully.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Any thing from Jen? No, all right. That brings us to board reports, I have nothing for the president report, any committee or board reports? None?
Any committee meetings, some board meetings?
We have an athletic advisory coming up.
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday at 7:30 AM. Any topics for future agendas or requests for information? Any communication to the board? I didn't receive any, did anyone receive? So that brings us to Board of Education Minutes, may I have a motion to approve the Board of Education Minutes for January 24th, 2023?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, Byron Hills, thank you.
Thank you for leading the ship tonight.
Good night, Byron Hills.